And welcome to the November 21st, 2023, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of address. Uh, city of residence, sorry. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. Counselor Fleming, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Squallia?
Present.
Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Kucha?
Here.
Counselor Craigan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
And Counselor Deena Tally. So we have 10 members present.
Thank you very much. Uh, public forum, if anyone in the audience would like to comment on any item on the agenda, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the agenda item on wishy-washy to speak, and you will be given not more than two minutes to speak on that item.
Mr. President, I got one question.
Yes, Counselor?
When a person comes up to the forum and talks and they give their name, could you ask them if they could spell their last name too at the same time?
Sure, I can try to remember to do that.
I will remind you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing none, we will proceed to our announcements, of which we only have one this evening. Uh, the next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, November 30th, 2023, from 4 until 5:30 PM, in room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. And just one moment. All right, uh, there is no report of the Appointments Committee this evening. Uh, report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Boishman?
Uh, Mr. President, today we have two reports on the agenda on the minutes for the previous councils of the hall and a regular meeting for the council. And I find on the council hall, that was the night we had the resolution about waste management?
Correct.
The records seem to be in order. On the regular council meeting, the records are perfect. They seem to be in order, too.
Excellent.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Had me worried for a minute there.
Motion to accept the committee's report on records?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, they are unanimously accepted. Uh, we have a communication from His Honor, the Mayor, a reappointment letter for Michael Mr., uh, Mr. Michael McLaughlin, uh, as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, for term to expire January 1st, 2029. Uh, that will stand referred to appointments. Uh, report of city property, Counselor Craigan?
So, we had a meeting, and I'm going to get my notes out here. Um, we had four items on our agenda. The approval of the minutes, which are included in your big package from the Clerk's office, um, you probably have online. Uh, item number 1, 181-23, was declaring 12 Park Street a surplus needs. So, I appreciate Executive Director, Planning, Community Development Department, Liz Murphy, for going and getting us video of 12 Park Street. It was not clear right away that it was, it was going to be, um, it was going to be appropriate to send it to side yard sales because it's, it's of buildable size, but the determination is that it really isn't. Um, there isn't the space to do that. There isn't the, there isn't the room on the street. And so, um, this was actually an interesting sidebar because this is the first time in city property that I've served where, um, we had to really deliberate on the possible future of a piece of property. So, I would imagine when Treasurer Cervantes gets through the tax work that I think is probably keeping her very busy right now, um, this will be assigned to the next side yard sales. The other item was 24, 2433-23. This is an amazing project, 130 Academy Street, which, um, has been owned by the city and was, uh, given, um, was given in our meeting to the Fitchburg School Department. The students at Long Show and all of our middle schools, as part of civics education in Fitchburg, have been engaged in real civics outreach to the city. And they had a presentation, a number of us went to it, um, at Memorial, where students sort of looked around their immediate environments and said, what do we need? What would we like? And for some, it was cleaner, you know, facilities. For others, especially Long Show, where there is no open space, it was open space. So, I, having spent years on the school committee, this is one of those instances where the students said, we need something, and we, as a city and a school department, were able to provide it. So, it remains to be seen exactly what the, you know, what the, uh, what it will look like in the end, but as you can, as I can tell you, the plan is we clean the area, use the Department of Conservation Greening Gateway Cities grant to do that. And, um, the, um, uh, you know, the future for the kids up at Long Show will give them some open land that did not previously be part of their school day. Uh, other two items were the surplus property, uh, 567 Crawford Street, um, and I think, I want to do another one before then, which was, nope, it was the 12, oh, excuse me, yeah, 84 Elm Street. So, 84 Elm Street is that the, um, uh, Liz, would you like to come up and sort of give everyone an overview on 84 Elm Street? It's, it's going to be a very familiar building to all of you.
Sure. Hi, my name's Liz Murphy, Executive Director of Community Development. The 84 Elm Street is the former Superior Courthouse that has been sitting vacant, uh, right behind Monument Park for a while. Um, we are working with the state to put out, to jointly put out an RFP. We're basically the middle, middle man, so to speak, um, for, uh, selling this property through an RFP. The state will retain the property until we have, uh, a good proposal that we can approve. Um, and once we have that proposal, we'll own it for like a minute, as we pass it from the state to them. So, um, we're working with the state right now. We actually just had a meeting with them today. We're targeting, um, somewhere around February, March, to get this RFP out the door. Um, they just had a new attorney assigned to that, that, um, project, so we're just getting up to speed again, but it looks like we're there. We're going to sign a land disposition agreement with them, and they have a, a number of riders that will have to be attached to our RFP because they have, um, they have some expectations that need to be passed on to the eventual buyers. But we're looking for, um, a proposal that would, um, seek to use it as a commercial space, perhaps a boutique hotel, housing, um, you know, commercial mixed use. So, we're looking for the, the best possible use that fits with downtown, and that's the proposal that, the RFP that we're putting in front of council.
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome. So, this will be exciting news moving forward, but, um, I'd also like to make a request that we, um, adjust our, our agenda because we have the final item, 244-23, about portions of 567 Crawford Street. Um, this, okay, it says, uh, Airport Master Plan on page 2, was recently revised and approved by the Planning Board. Um, and I don't think, I don't think that, that is correct, that it should be the, it's not the master plan revised. What we did at city property was to declare the property surplus so it could then be developed. So, not sure what the most accurate language to edit this would be. Um, that we don't really need that sentence about the Airport Master Plan was recently revised and approved by the Planning Board, um, but I, I think just that the, uh, we're declaring it as surplus property.
Move to amend 244-23 to strike the Airport Master Plan was recently revised and approved by the Planning Board.
Okay, and we'll, we'll close that as a Senate?
All right, so hang on a moment. We've got a lot of people going at cross purposes here. First, I need to know if there's a second on the motion.
I seconded it.
All right. Now, on the motion, Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Thank you. Um, that is one way to, to handle it. I think we, just to, we could check with Mr. Kettle maybe, um, but would it be accurate to be the approval body for the Airport Master Plan to be the FAA? Would it make sense to say it was approved by the FAA?
It was approved by the FAA.
Move to amend 2, as Counselor Van Hanzinger says.
Second.
All right. Uh, any objection from the chair?
Nope, that, that works well.
All right, any objections from anyone? All right, then it is amended as stated.
Before we move on to a vote on this, um, I think, Mr. Kettle, you have something to show, you have the presentation to, to show about the future possible plans?
If, I'm, I'm told it's relatively brief, a few minutes?
Yes.
I'm told it's relatively brief, a few minutes, I said?
Make it into a few minutes.
All right, uh, in that case, uh, certainly, you can come on up, and if you want to screen share through Zoom, that's great. Uh, while you're setting up, I do also have a, an email here from Russ Carlstad, who couldn't be with us this evening, uh, who indicates that he is in opposition to this, uh, and indicates, uh, this property is needed for the future needs of the city. To allow this property to be developed in this manner will result in the city losing a valuable piece of land better suited to future city needs, such as a new DPW space, new parking and service location for school buses, as I believe we lease space now, and other undetermined needs. I ask you table this until such time as a study is done to determine best use. We did this for 44 Winusnok. We should do it for all properties before we lose them forever. There is no rush to make this happen. Let us do what is best for the city long-term needs. Thanks, Russ K. Uh, and if you're all set, you may proceed.
President Zarella, city councillors, thank you for the opportunity to present what I believe to be the future of Fitchburg Municipal Airport. Um, what I'd like to do is give you an update very, very quickly on the aviation side to show you where we are and what we've done. Um, basically, we have one hangar that's just going up now. It's already got the beams in, the roof's going on, and that's for the lifelike. You saw that bounce in. The second one is a hangar to go between the Fitchburg Pilots Association and Nagel Aircraft, and that was approved out of the results of an RFP. And then we have approximately 22 acres of land here that we're going to develop, um, with a company called, um, I'll get to that in a second. Okay, so what can we do on that 22 acres? Basically, we can put on about 72 new hangars. 54 T-hangers, 18 in each of the three that you see there, and then we have another 11 here for larger airplanes, twin-engine planes. And then on top of that, we have another 10 areas that we can put in, uh, hangars for jets. And just to let you know, we do have 50, 49 corporate jets coming into the city now. Big revenue for us. So, once they've all been done, then that's the aviation use completed. But just very, very quickly, I took 10 of the senior companies that are flying into us on a regular basis, and you'll see number four, Coke Industries, it's the second largest company in North America. They, they're spending a lot of money in the area, developing the area. And we have Urtz, that you know, the chip people, and Peter Belt on Crawford Street, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is one of the planes that flew in. Um, I was asked if this gentleman could bring his plane in, and I said, we, we welcome anybody. He said, Peter, I have a Global Air 7500. Just to show you the size of this, that is me standing next to the plane, and that landed at Fitchburg Airport. He took 1,000 gallons of fuel. So, these are the sort of things that we're doing at the moment. Now, in the past, you know that we have two hangars down there, hangars 2 and 3, that really should be taken down and rebuilt, at a cost of around about 1 and a half to $2 million, that I'm going to come to you next month to ask for that money to build these hangars. Now, I'm only joking, okay? What we've, what we've actually done, in 1929, these hangars went up, and with, with a grant from MassDOT, we've actually refurbished these hangars.
Wow.
They've got another 20 years lifetime guarantee on them, the roof and the doors, another 20 years' life, so, uh, maybe I won't be around in those days, but another 20 years out of it. So, and there is two of them. This is the photograph of the two. And then we have this space area that you all knew as airport trailers, I believe, which is today Big Tex. When I took the position, there was, I used to get a, a recent, a monthly update of who should be paying what as rent to the airport, and I didn't realize that that was in the city of Fitchburg. It wasn't on the list, and then I found out it was on the list, and they were paying $2,000 a year for that space because that's all it can be used for, really. It's all undulating, it's, it's not a nice piece of property. But in discussions with them, they are now going to pay $22,000 a year. So, we're making money, a big, big increase for the city and the airport. And then, I guess, we're going to move to a company called VHB, and I'm not going to go into detail, and I've got to thank Liz and Mary Jo for doing this, but this is a consultation company, engineers, scientists, planners, and designers, delivering future-focused solutions that shape more sustainable, resilient, and equitable communities. If you remember, last year, the city got a grant for $100,000 from MassDevelopment. MassDevelopment employed this company to come in, evaluate the airport, and make suggestions of what we can do moving forwards. So, you've seen the suggestions that really fall in line with what we'd already planned on the aviation usage, but on the non-aviation, what have we got? Non-aviation, we have an area here, just over 12 acres, and we have another area running down Crawford Street. There were area running down Crawford Street, around about 4.3 acres. So, this is all under development, and this is what we were talking about with the respect to the presentation that I already made to the city council, that you moved me on to the property commission. So, what can we do there? Oh, and besides, you see that little one bouncing then? That's the new restaurant. As soon as the RVs leave the space next to the administration building, we're going to put another RFP out for a restaurant. So, hopefully, we'll get a restaurant. There's around about 8,000 square feet there. Also room for parking as well. But what about the main area that we've got? Well, maybe we're going to have something like this, a warehouse. That's Crawford Street, the train line and the solar farm on the left-hand side here. What does something like that bring the airport and the city? And that's non-aviation, but they will be flying around it, of course. So, you know, you can tell I like PowerPoint. So, what does that bring to the city? The actual hangar, it's a hangar. The warehouse is 241,000 square feet, using 50 cents a square foot. That gives us 784,000 square feet and revenue of $392,000 to the airport. $392,000. Counselor Boishman's always been telling me, we've got to make money at the airport. So, this is to show you that we can make money at the airport. Alternatively, we could have, sorry, annual property tax, 1.06 million to the city on that basis. This is what this company, VHB, actually told us for that size of, of warehouse, based on the information that they got from the city. Okay? So, 160 new jobs to the city as well. Or maybe we could have two warehouses and a hotel. These are all suggestions, they're not fixed in stone, but the number of people that fly into the city airport, Fitchburg City Airport, I'd say 80% of them go to hotels, not in the city, not in the city. The pilots go to the Hilton. All the rest go to Devon's in the hotels down there, or they go down to Worcester to the hotels. So, having one on the airport, as well as maybe one in the city, would be an advantage to everybody, the city and the airport. So, what does that bring in? Annual revenue from all of it, $392,000 for the airport, annual property tax, 1.195 million dollars, room tax as well on top of that, plus 150 new jobs. So, moving in the right direction, let's have a look down Crawford Street. How's that for Crawford Street?
Wow.
With the new development on there. So, mom-and-pop shops, maybe a cafe, maybe a filling station, because there's no gas stations in that area at all, ideally situated. The conclusions that VHB made was that, based on these findings, the project team recommends that the city and the airport advance efforts to lease, and I'm going to take out sell, for private sector development, ideally mixed, a mix of industrial, retail, and hotel. And if you all remember, about 10 years ago, we had the opportunity to put solar, a solar farm down at the airport, and that solar farm was going to bring us in $300,000 a year, but the existing mayor said, no, it was too early, it wasn't ready for it, so we lost it. Today, they will give us $30,000 for that same area. So, just to take that away. Now, the summary of their development options, let's go to site, which is the north side, which is where we're, we're talking about non-aviation. 160 new jobs for the ground lease, which is just the warehouse, 14.53 million dollars over 10 years to the city. Ground lease alternative 1B, which is the warehouse, retail, and the hotel, 150 new jobs, 15 million to the city over that timeframe. Now, just to highlight that, because I think it's very important on the decision that you make going forwards, we cannot sell that property. The FAA forbids us to sell that property. The FAA says that as we're a grant-approved airport, then we have to have constant revenue coming into the airport. So, we lease it, we've got monthly revenue coming into the airport. So, you all know this beautiful logo here. What's missing?
Airplane.
No, look at it.
Why can't there be an airplane, right, flying?
What's missing?
Train.
Oh, come on. Train, right. So, I believe it was in 1845, Alva Crocker realized that he didn't have what he needed to get his goods to the ports of Boston. So, he brought the train line. The great city of Fitchburg had a train line. It's 1764, a town, but then came the train. See, there it comes, okay? So, we had a train come in, but, but, and I have to say but, in 1872, a city, but what happened in 1929? We got an airport, as Amy says, sorry, Counselor Green says. 1929, to me, that is the jewel in the seal of the city. Because, just watch the center of the jewel. What's coming out? An airplane. So, shouldn't that be on our logo, on our city seal? We've got something there to offer the world, but we're not showing it. So, that's the end of the presentation. I'll take any questions that you want to throw at me.
I've got one real quick. I think it was a great presentation. I'm thrilled to hear everything that's going on and all the possibilities. One thing I was thinking about, because it's what I assumed was going to come on screen when I saw the building that you then identified as a warehouse, which is good, too, but I wonder if there's, I, I have no idea, would obviously have to consult with market experts, but I wonder if there's any appetite for a conference center, given the number of business people flying in, uh?
Absolutely, and for all the businesses around the city of Fitchburg.
Exactly, exactly.
One of the things that, um, Mary Delaney's done, as the Chief Procurement Officer, she's formed a team, and the team is going to go out with an RFEI. And that RFEI is going to end at around about the end of March. 1st of April, we'll have all the documents there, and that team will evaluate whatever comes into the city. And the ones that are serious and have had a chance to speak to Mary on the future development of the city will then go forward to the RFP. There was two options that the commission had. One was the RFEI or the RFP. The commission went for the RFEI. So, we've already had two meetings with Liz there and Attorney Poussetteri, myself, Nick Erickson, Mary Jo, and Mary, of course, and I-
And your commissioner.
Oh, Rich Raymond, the, the, the commission chairman. So, that's all being discussed on whatever. I mean, this isn't fixed in stone. These were virtually recommendations made by the consultant on what could be done on that property. So, but yes, convention center, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, uh, Counselor Green, I believe you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Peter, I want to just take this opportunity once again to commend your efforts in the six years that you've been now at the airport, how far we've come. Um, so I commend that, and I get excited about projects like this. I, I would welcome an airplane or a little, uh, homage to aviation for our community. Do you have numbers on the potential rent from the, from the new hangars that were proposed? Would that be millions per year in rent?
If, if, if we got all of them in?
Yes.
Um, if we built them, it would be millions.
Okay.
But if it goes out to private investors, then they would pay the 50 cents a square foot. So, there's going to be maybe 70 of them, and if you take an average of 4,000 square foot per hangar, where's the mathematician in the room? Just do a quick figure and we'll give you the figure.
That's not nearly enough.
But it's going to be a lot of money.
But, but it's 50 cents a square foot, is that, is that market average? Are we selling ourselves short, or are we bound by that?
Four years ago, it was 23 cents a square foot. It's now up to 50 cents a square foot, because people weren't paying what they should be paying. Now they are. Um, I, myself, and also the airport, is a member of MAMA, the Massachusetts Airport Management Association, and prior to putting all this together, I actually went to MAMA and said, what are the average prices for the square foot per airports in Massachusetts? We're dead in the middle.
Okay.
We're dead in the middle. So, we're, we're going down the right path.
All right. Would it also behoove us as a community, or you as, you know, your team, to sit down with, with the 10 biggest airport influencers and find out from them what they would like to see on the airport property? I mean, would they welcome a hotel with, I mean, I'm thinking of a mini, not a Great Wolf, but I mean, something like that, where it's, you know, hotel, some entertainment, restaurant type of thing, but then a conference center so that not only they could utilize it, but then we as, you know, partnerships in the city could also utilize that facility?
That's a good question. I believe the answer to that is, Mary's actually put a team together to actually investigate all of that, and city development is, is within that team as well, so hopefully, we can put everything together. I mean, it's still early stages, so-
But I would like the, for the, the, the big, you know, the big 10 players that are utilizing the airport as it is right now, what, what would they welcome?
I understand.
You know what I mean? To make them feel a part of this.
Right.
I want them to invest in these projects.
Understand.
Thank you.
It's on my slop shoot, as we say in England. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
Thank you. So, to, um, the vein of, could we do a different development, or, um, Facilities Director concerns about a potential other opportunity at the airport? This proposal is to put it out to an RFEI, request for-
Expression of interest.
Expression of interest. So, the proposal, the presentation proposal might be vastly different than the, than the, you know, proposed interest that we get.
Absolutely.
And we'll be able to decide that with the, with the team, April, March, March, April.
Um, okay. So, uh, given the, uh, given the scale of the, the presentation and kind of the vision that you've provided for all of us and people in the city watching, um, I, I reached out to Marissa, we didn't, we didn't have a chance to connect because Marissa being the Chair of the City Property Subcommittee. Um, I also reached out to Nick as well, um, and, and I, I, I voted in the affirmative for this because this is what Fitchburg is.
Correction.
Sorry, go ahead.
Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Public Works, yeah. I, I got that completely backwards. Yes.
That's okay.
Public Works, city property, for, so, there it is. Um, I, I haven't had lengthy conversations with Mr. Carlstad. Um, he did mention it to me, he sent me a text before the city property meeting. Um, I, I-
I-
He did mention it to me, he sent me a text before the City Property Meeting. It just seems to me, and I think you made a pretty clear case, that the commercial development, where that is, is important. And the conversations I've had, as I walked Fitchburg, all six wards, pretty deliberately, were that a lot of people said, "That's great what's happening to Main Street, but what about the rest of the city? What about John Fitch Highway? What about Water Street? What about these other locations that are just so rich for development?" And you have described something that would be an anchor tenant to this giant region of the city, and really, north-central Massachusetts, because you want to talk about access from Route 2? Boom, 30 seconds, 45 seconds, or two minutes if you drive like I do. So, I just wanted to, you know, say thank you again for bringing the presentation. I'm glad you're here.
My pleasure.
And I, we thought, for the most part, we thought that this was thought out, and that your working with Mary Delaney is, you know, indicates. And what Nick indicated to me was that it would be an ideal location for DPW, but do we want a hamstring development, commercial development, for that purpose? Because, yes, we have this now, but it seems to me that that work is being done, that that thoughtfulness has already, has occurred. So, I yield the floor.
Just to add, Nick Erickson is part of this team as well. I omitted to put him on, but he's part of this team, so.
And I'll just second that. You know, I had this conversation with Russ beforehand, and he emailed me as a reminder, but I'm very sensitive to his concerns about we don't want to give things away that we may need in the future. But the particular needs that he uses as an example, DPW space, parking and service location for school buses, those both basically just require space somewhere, and this happens to be space somewhere. But this is ideally situated space for this other type of development, that you can't just move to whatever other open space we might identify that we could use for DPW or what have you. I certainly want our DPW and our school department to have all the resources they need, but I'm not sure this particular parcel is the thing to hold back for that, even if there were a strongly expressed interest from those two departments, which I'm, what I'm hearing is, there isn't. They agree that this should be developed. That said, next up, I have Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Kettle, for the presentation. It's equally entertaining the second time around to City Property. I'm thrilled by this, I'm thrilled by the work, the turnaround that's happened at the airport under your management, under your leadership, and I'm sensitive to the thoughts of Commissioner Carlstad, but this is something that's going to drive economic development in the city, whereas we have needs in other areas, but those needs are going to be, they're going to cost us money, the DPW. So, this is for economic development in the city, and what we have with Commissioner Kettle is someone who is driving the city into the future, not just the airport. He's been driving the city into the future from day one, since he got here six years ago. He's been an absolute asset to this city, and I, although I'm sensitive to the email from Commissioner Carlstad, we haven't seen enough effort by, for other options yet. We have hypotheticals, but here is someone who is genuinely pushing this city forward into the future, and I'm not going to hold that up at the 11th hour. I'm thrilled to see this, and thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman?
Pete, I like part of it. Part of it, I like the hangars, but I agree with Russ, that I think we should hold it off on some of this, and see where we're headed with this. The DPW needs a lot of area, bigger area than what they have right now. You all talk about how close we are to Route 2, very close to Route 2. The whole purpose, the whole purpose of us trying to do downtown is to bring people downtown. That's our whole purpose, to get them down here, so they'll do their shopping down here, and whatever business they have to do. So, we're going to make something down there, right close to Route 2? I can give you examples right up here in Clegg on, where you get up there off of Roast on Row, where they get their condos, they don't even go downtown. They go just the opposite way, and they can't figure out why people don't shop in our area. Really? So, I'm going to back Russ 100%. That's what we hired him for. He knows, we can put this on hold, there's no rush to it. I'm not going to say, "Go ahead, Pete, you get the whole thing." No, I'm not doing that. I'll give them part of it. I like the hangar part of it, I like the restaurant part of it, and everything else, but this piece of land, what's the hurry? We seem like we're in a hurry for everything. What's the hurry? Really, the land's not going anywhere, so what's the hurry? I mean, let's really think about this before we jump and say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," and 20 years down the road, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, what's going going, yeah," and nothing happens. So, I want to wait. I'm going to make a motion that we hold this one. That's what I want.
All right, someone remind me when we take up the vote to pull this separately then? Counselor Fleming?
Thank you. With all due respect to the counselor to my right, he's never really been in favor of the airport to begin with, and me from the get-go, this has always been a project that I felt needed to, we needed to expand on it. And as far as development, I've always cautious about that development that we're doing is development in the right location. We don't develop just to develop. We wouldn't take this and throw this in rural residential. It is perfect in the location that it's set, and I'm thrilled to see what is planned for this airport, and I'm all for it. Although I do empathize with DPW, I believe we can find another location to get what is needed for the schools and DPW done elsewhere, but this is the perfect location for what we are looking at. I just, I'm thrilled with this. Thank you. Wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ren Hatzinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important to consider that this is just the first step in the process, that we're not signing a lease tonight with our vote. And really, what we're doing is we're just seeing what is the interest out there? What are people interested in doing there? And I think it's worthwhile to take that step and see what interest there is, and see if it's worthwhile. Because if it's a minimal use that doesn't really benefit the city, doesn't create property taxes, doesn't provide a useful use, we can just drop it. We don't have to move forward. We don't have to lease it.
Exactly.
We can hold on to it if we, if there's a possibility, we can use it better as a city ourselves, or just hold in the future. But if we get some very strong interest, and some good proposals that will be very beneficial to the city, it's, I think it's a good opportunity to take, because this is very well positioned by the highway. And I understand the counselor's comments about the efforts downtown, but if you look at modern hotels, they are likely to be by the highway. That's where they want to be. And we have tremendous need for hotels, rooms in this area, and they're a great revenue generator, both through property taxes and the room tax. So, if we have a possibility like that, and there's interest, it's absolutely something we should look forward, look into further. But I do understand that, you know, if we need space later on, it's going to be more expensive, but I don't know that we need to be located by the highway if we need a new DPW yard. We also have to pay for a new DPW yard, which is, we have no idea. So, I think it's a lot of hypotheticals in the future. So, if we take this first step and just say, "What is the interest? Should we move forward? Should we not? Is it not worth our while?" So, I think that's the way we should approach it. So, I am in favor of this petition.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Van Hatzinger. Thank you, Counselor President Zerola. That, you know, we're in the early stages, we want to see what's out there, and, I mean, we've talked a lot in the city about the need for more hotel space, which would be great, and of course, new jobs would be great at a warehouse. We thought we had that with Amazon, but it hasn't happened yet. Did you, the recommendation, was there a recommendation for a number of years they wanted to lease, that they felt you should lease the property?
They cannot lease it for longer than 50 years. The FAA will not allow it.
Okay. So, you know, with the information I have tonight, I certainly would be in favor of at least exploring it. I mean, we did the same thing with New Snark Road, we didn't get the proposals that we wanted, so let's see what's out there, if it can generate money for the city, and, you know, expand our hotel space, and do a lot, and really expand our jobs that we have in the city. I'm certainly in favor of it, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I yield the floor. Thank you. Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I absolutely love this idea. I think it's a great way to explore what more the airport can do for the city. One thing I would say to update the plane on the city logo, it appears, my vision's not very good, but it looks to be a biplane. I think we've gotten, you know, far past that. If I, my vision's not very good.
But 1929.
Okay.
That's why I put a 1929 plane on.
Okay, no, that's acceptable. But, you know, for many, many years, as long as I've been on the council, and far before that, my counselor to my left has been chastising the airport, and every time you come before us, Mr. Kettle, you know, he always has a negative comment to say. Now, we have some really positive, you know, outlooks on what can happen, and yet, he's still complaining, you know? And I think this is good. I think it's good for the city, and, you know, no matter if it's close to the highway or not, I think it's going to generate some decent money coming into the city, and I applaud this, and I look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squawley?
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the airport land, the city can't just decide to put a DPW yard on it, right?
Right.
So, I mean, the process would be a similar, if not the exact same process, that we are proposing here for an RFEI. I mean, we put out an RFEI, we put out a proposal for this expression of interest. The city itself could apply for this. Is that correct?
Theory.
Right?
I don't see any reason why not.
So, this process would be the same process if the city wanted to use that land for DPW yard, or whatever other suggestion Mr. Carlstad had, right? So, I think this is, the proposal really is all-encompassing, and gives us the most amount of options. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, just one last thought, how this benefits Fitchburg, downtown Fitchburg. You have a lot of kids that go to Fitchburg State that are coming from out of state, that parents will now have a place to fly into and have a place to stay, rather than going to Lemonster, or Westminster, or Worcester. They'll have a place in Fitchburg, and when they come to visit their kids at Fitchburg State, they will be downtown utilizing Fitchburg's finest restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
I would like to just mention that options for DPW and this process, again, off the subject of the airport, but, you know, we have the old Unitil site that possibly could go through the same process of, you know, request of interest, if in fact, you know, I would never want to give the DPW the first right of refusal for the airport road, knowing that we have several other city sites available that could house DPW. Not under my purview as a city counselor to say where they go or not, but there's always options available. So, I don't want to undercut us and turn down an economic development driver to house something that is stagnant, you know what I mean? It doesn't generate anything for us. So, that's my only thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to call for a vote on the first three items.
Mr. President, can I pull 181-23? Because I have a disagreement with.
You want to pull that one as well?
Yes, because it is a buildable lot, and what they have to do is pull a special permit for that piece of lot, and I'm not giving that piece of lot to a signed yard sale.
So, on that topic, first of all, yes, we'll pull it, but on that topic, I did have a comment of my own on that subject, which is that I'm perfectly fine with it going to Side Yard, but if it does, and if it gets sold through Side Yard, I would want to see an express condition placed in the deed stating that it is not buildable, because, yes, technically it is a buildable lot, it's just not feasible as a buildable lot. But I don't want to have the zoning board dealing with something five years down the road, where someone comes in and says, "Yeah, you know, if you squint and look at it sideways, this is a buildable lot, so give me permission to build, you know, something here that's going to give us all sorts of setback and congestion issues in the future."
Just to clarify, this is, the proposal is that we hold it?
Is it actually correctly labeled here?
That was held in the meeting.
Madam Chair?
We held it, sorry, we held it at our meeting. We, yeah, we held it at our meeting, correct.
Okay, yes, so Counselor.
It's not even on the table.
It's being held at the moment.
Mr. President, I understand that, but her proposal was, when she said it, that she could recommend it just be put into a side yard.
Right, but that's not what the report actually says, so you can vote in favor of the report without voting in favor of sending it to Side Yard.
Okay.
So, do you still want to pull it, or can we vote it together with the others?
Make the shot, and I will put it together.
All right. So, can I please have a motion on 181, 243, and 245?
Make a motion to accept 181, 243, and 245.
I have a motion and a second to accept the report of the City Property Commission as to those three items. Any objections? All right, it is unanimously approved. Now, we have before us 244-23.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
As amended.
Yes, as amended. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, I'll just ask again for formality's sake, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition, Counselor Boishman. It is accepted by a vote of nine to one. Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. This is Counselor Jean Taliesin, of course, he is not here, so I will.
Make motion to accept.
Second.
All right, I do have to at least give a brief overview of the report itself, but, yeah, so there were multiple items, most of them grants. Actually, I think, yes, all but two were grants. One was the acquisition of the lot at the end, of the parcel at the end of John Fitch, or not at the end, at the juncture of John Fitch Highway and Lunenburg Street, for $550,000. And the final item was the appropriation of just over $75,000 to begin an architectural assessment of the Forest Hill Abbey Mausoleum at Forest Hill Cemetery, with an eye towards rehabilitating it going forward. And I have a motion and second to approve the report of the committee. Any objections? All right, it is unanimously approved by a vote of nine to zero, with Counselor Cruz momentarily absent. We have a request for suspension of the rules on 258-23, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the transfer of $65,000 from Building Department Personal Services Department head to Building Department Expenses Contracted Services.
So moved.
To cover the cost of contracted building inspection and zoning enforcement services.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squawley?
Aye.
Counselor Ren Hatzinger?
Yes.
President Zerola?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Craigin?
Yes.
Do we want to wait for Counselor Cruz to be part of the next vote?
It's fine, he can be one or the other, and we have the two-thirds one regardless, so.
So, we'll just say he was, so that would be nine.
Yep, excellent. So, it is now before us, this is simply to cover the services of the temporary building commissioner, who we have here, actually, on Mark Barbadoro's recommendation. He acquired this individual for us to cover in his absence until we have.
Approve 250-23.
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any objections? All right, it is approved by nine to zero. Next, we have a number of other finance orders with the consent of council. I'll waive the reading, and they will stand referred to finance.
So moved.
Seeing no objection, they are referred. We do have. Seeing no objection, they are referred. We do have three sideyard sales that have already gone through city property and sideyard and are now before us for final approval. The first is, oh, right, this is the one that I accidentally deleted the addresses. Do you have the full?
I don't.
Okay. Let me pull up the packet.
Sandwich for?
No, it's all right.
Addresses, the actual addresses. Oh, the addresses?
Yeah. I accidentally deleted them from the agenda.
Oh, okay.
For everyone's clarification purposes, I was trying to trim down a very, very long agenda item and deleted the wrong paragraph by mistake, leading to the address not being included. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. It was Mechanic Street 2, let me go, it's actually in the larger package.
266 is Mechanic Street?
Um, yes. Sounds right. 260 is Mechanic?
266 is, 266-23 is Mechanic Street, but we're looking for the exact address.
Sorry, I'm not pulling it up. Where the 11? Is Attorney Poussetteri on Zoom that we could ask?
He is. He is. Attorney Poussetteri, do you happen to have those addresses handy since you may have been working on the deeds?
I am looking them up right now, Council President.
Excellent.
Wasn't it 50 Allen Place 1?
Sorry?
This is from--
50 Allen Place, Allen Place.
Yeah, 223 Mechanic Street. I've got, Mr. President, 223 Mechanic Street is the first I have here.
That's 266-23?
Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, you need the number, or the order number.
This is what happens when I try to be more efficient.
Like to call for a five-minute recess?
Granted.
This is why I mentioned it on Friday.
Our first item of these sideyard sales is 266-23, which is number 223 Mechanic Street. Counselor Craigin, would you like to fill the council in on what the intent for this parcel is?
Absolutely. The purchasers will be adding, they own a multifamily apartment building, one of the larger ones on Mechanic Street. This will allow them to extend their yard. The owners of the building were very familiar with every tenant, including the fact that one tenant was expecting a baby. There are children there. This is the Elm Street neighborhood. There is not a lot of yard space for children who live in the apartment buildings. So, this will be providing open space for kids in that building.
All right. Counselors, that this item is before us. Any questions?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and second to accept 266-23. Any objections? Oh, Counselor Fleming on the motion?
With that, they will continue, they will keep that property clean and free of debris and everything.
That's among the standard deed conditions--
Okay.
--that we impose.
Yeah. In fact, we can, yeah, no, that was absolutely part of the conditions. That is a sloping property. It is, you know, but it's a property that with terracing could make for a nice outdoor area.
Thank you.
All right. Any objections?
I'm speaking on the--
On the motion?
I'm sorry.
Counselor Green, go ahead.
Thinking about them using it as a green space and a yard versus parking, you know, Mechanic Street is busy. The cars drive fast, and kids are potentially, could be in and out of the parked cars. So, I would highly recommend that the owners really think about fencing that if they are going to use it as green space.
There is actually no access to the street. It's really tucked behind. So, you can see the property if you're on Mechanic Street looking down. There's actually a whole building and another abutter. There's no possible, there's no car that could even come near it. I know exactly what you mean about Mechanic Street.
Okay.
Because there is a lot of, you know, housing on the right side of the street that is close to Elm Street. But, no, this is about as tucked away as any yard could be.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do I have unanimous consent?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to 267-23. This is Zero Daniels Street. Counselor Craigin?
Not much to add to this. The folks who petitioned for it, they had need of parking. There is a family member who has difficulty walking, and it was a difficulty to kind of get to the house from where they were parking. So, this is just facilitating their lives. And they were, you know, they were very grateful to have the opportunity to, also to clean it up.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any objections? It is unanimously approved. 268-23, this is 12 Martell Street. Counselor Craigin?
Again, similar. This is a place where people had been, you know, dumping trash. It wasn't adding to the neighborhood. A lot of the sideyards, I now have the list, thank you very much, from the assessor's office, but a lot of our sideyards are, for better for worse, up in Clegorne because of how density was and the building of multifamily homes. So, yeah, this was a unanimous vote on the part of the assessor and treasurer who was also in the meeting. So--
Approve 268-23.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second. Any objections? It is unanimously approved. We have several petitions which will be referred to their respective committees. If there is no objection, I'll waive the reading. And lastly, we have an item, Solicitor Poussetteri, you'll have to refresh my memory what we were doing with this ethier street item that we brought back onto the agenda.
City property was moving for public safety.
Right, right. Okay. So, as I understand it, City Property had held this matter, waiting to hear first from Public Works. Public Works has now reviewed it, and so we are now referring this back to City Property or pulling it at the option of the council from City Property to act on tonight. I was going to ask you as chair, was City Property holding it only because Public Works hadn't done it before, or do you still have further deliberations that need to occur?
I believe that we resolved those deliberations, so we are in the right place for that item.
All right. In that case, I would like a motion to pull the item from City Property so that we can act on it.
Make a motion to pull it from City Property.
On the motion, Counselor?
On the motion. I think there is one question. There was still a payment that needed to be made by the developer before this was going to be processed. So, I don't know if we have confirmation whether or not that's been made.
I didn't hear--
Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah, that's his.
Yes, we have an escrow agreement with the developer. Their performance bond is being held. Your approval of the petition tonight will cause the payment of $4,500 to be received by the city, and the balance of that performance bond will be returned to the developer. They're going to provide the deed documents and the other things that we'll need to prepare your order and have that processed for you.
All right. Thank you. That swages my concerns.
All right. So, this is on the motion to pull it from the committee. Do I have unanimous consent?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no objections, it is now before us. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
To accept. All right. I have a motion and second to accept 128-23. Anyone on the motion? Any objections? It is approved. That concludes our agenda, and a very happy Thanksgiving to all of you guys and your families.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Same to you, Mr. President.
And to the City of Fitchburg.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.